1911.
Second.
This is, we've talked about it through several committee meetings, public hearings, and through the Planning Commission. This is to amend zoning code 231001 so that off-street bicycle parking will be required. And it changes various tables and this is basically in line with our pedestrian and bicycle plan and our comprehensive plan to help to encourage bicycle commuters by providing parking areas that are out of the rain and safe.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Member Butler.
Thank you. I just wanted to, thank you, President. I just wanted to offer my support for this particular ordinance. We did speak with a few citizens after last meeting who expressed some questions about this particular ordinance. And I see this as, again, a move in the right direction, helping the city become, again, bicycle pedestrian friendly. There's been a lot of discussion about it. We had an open forum in which the public had input as well. I think it's, again, a positive step.
Very good. Other comments from council? Mayor Wile.
I received an email from a citizen who was concerned about this thing requiring bike racks in residential zones. It really only pertains to commercial and multi-units, three units above, so it would be in all three zones and apartment complexes. So that was part of the concern is that we'd end up having to sprinkle bike racks all over the city, and that's not the case.
Other comments? Member Sands.
Although, a commercial area.
Yes.
Meaning Court Street, we're still trying to find bike parking spaces in the Court Street area.
Where the best.
That's a commercial area. Never mind.
Other comments? All those in favor of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 117 has been adopted. We move on to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 11911 is an ordinance amending the 2011 appropriation ordinance.
Mr. President, I don't have anything to say. The administration might want to make some changes to this.
Tell you choose on my loop because I wasn't.
I had heard from the Service Safety Director and I, some possible changes, some updates, but I don't, she's not here, so.
Okay.
Let it go to.
Is there a reading in man? Just then.
I don't know if she heard of their reading, but I think she meant updates coming up the next meeting.
More money.
More money.
Right. The question I asked about sewer administration, water administration, still out there, I asked Ray today. No, because those are roughly, should be roughly the same, and why is that one so low?
Mm-hmm.
And he had checked on some others, he said maybe it needs to be changed in the appropriation ordinance, but why don't we suspend and pass it?
Well, I think that, I did understand that that was the intent, that we would offer ordinance 11911 under, ask for suspension of the rules as it stands, and then if it needs to go. Okay. So, Mr. President, at this time, I ask that we consider ordinance 011911 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion on suspension only.
This ordinance moves money around in several places. A number of these spaces, a number of these movements are from general fund to, from funds that are not covering personnel costs and moving them to cover year-end personnel costs. So that they need to be, we ask that this be passed now to provide funds for payroll at the end of the year.
Other comments? All those in favor of suspension of the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are now suspended on ordinance 119.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 11911.
Second.
For the reasons I just discussed.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 12011 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of chlorine, fluoride, salt, caustic soda, and sulfur dioxide and declaring an emergency. Member Bain, did you wish to speak to this tonight?
I don't think so.
Ordinance 12111 is an ordinance amending ordinance 3211 authorizing a contract extension of the city's third-party health insurance administrator. Ordinance 12211 is an ordinance authorizing a contract to provide a third-party administrator for the city's prescription drug plan and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 12411 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Hawking, Athens, Perry Community Action, APCAP, as designated grantee to administer Athens' public transit and declaring an emergency. The next item on our agenda, as we said, will not be happening tonight, that being an executive session. And the last item on our agenda for the special session is adjournment. Having addressed all items on our agenda, we are adjourned. We now move on to a series of committees, beginning first with Finance and Personnel Committee. Member Chair, Member Sands. Member Chair, Member Sands. Blah, 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 blah.
2012 budget, Member Bain just mentioned that she's had some questions, that she's asked the auditor. We're still waiting for those answers.
Since I just asked him at 3:00, though, we haven't really gone on.
Well, no excuses. Okay.
Thus, we're not drumming our fingers yet.
And what I would like to do now is ask that we could schedule a Finance and Personnel Committee meeting for Thursday afternoon at 1:30 to take the place of, or at least augment our standing auditors' meeting with the Finance and Personnel Committee. So, all are invited. Hopefully, we'll have further discussion and some commitments to our 2012 budget, and then we can discuss it and take the first vote next week. Mayor.
I believe I sent you a draft about a week ago? Yes, okay, okay. Okay, I see you got copies of it. Some of the things I probably have to be changed to reflect some of the capital improvements, of course, will be the Oxbow Bridge for next year. That's, we're working out the numbers right now. I think you'll be discussing that in transportation, right, Chris?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're also, so we'll be looking at some of the capital ones that have yet to be put into the mix. What about the other issues?
Personnel line. I've asked for a review of personnel.
Okay.
Personnel lines.
We have a personnel, no, I mean a personnel ordinance with a few things on it, so there may be more next week, right, after our meeting?
Correct. We have one now.
I mean, we were going to reduce one position, master mechanic, and we already talked about that two weeks ago.
But, and this would be one of the second ones, in addition to that.
That would have to be a staffing ordinance that.
Yeah, part of the whole nine, the whole enchilada.
Okay. Let's see, if you're looking at the budget, you'll notice that the amount in the general funds, like 12 million, 12.2, if I remember, revenue that Kathy was talking about is a little bit lower than that, which means we'll be eating into our carryover. Am I correct in that?
Correct.
Okay.
That's pretty typical every year.
Okay. So, I want to point out that problem or discrepancy right there, 12, and the only revenue projection I have in front of me right now, because I, as I say, I'm a little bit thrown off by picking up the wrong piece of paper here, was the revenue projection as of August was about 10.9 million.
Right. So, a lot of money. That's the issue, is how much we're eating into the carryover.
Yes, okay. So, that gives you an idea. Again, we're talking about a reduction of almost 3% for the next year.
Plus, we transferred in close to, not 100,000, but 100,000 from all funds, from unappropriated balance into the 100s. In the ordinance we just passed.
Yes, yes.
And that's always a concern.
Okay, and the total amount's 29.8 million, if you look at the second page. Again, that is a decrease from last year, but really, the biggest jump in there is the 1.5 for the buses that we had put in last year. If you remember, we were rolling that around and buying buses and getting reimbursed for buses, but since we're not buying any, you know, $500,000 bus, I think it was 32 last year, I may be wrong on that. I don't have the paper in front of me again, but.
Would you rather next week go over the capital outlay things you have in here outside of Melo Yellow?
Okay, yes. Basically, the yellow reflects everything that I did not change or look at. Some of the things do not need changing, some of the things we just, we didn't put in terms of real tax and highway tax because that would be in the capital that Andy wants appropriated when needed.
So, for example, the add to 12,500 and refund 600? Inquiring minds want to know.
Where are you now?
I'm on page one.
Page one, auditor? Yes, what about?
What's 12,000, what's the 3,000? I'm just going to go down and ask you all.
3,000, I have 300,000.
Yeah, 300,000. A zero here, a zero there.
Where's the 300 for?
Yeah, that's for refunds for the tax department.
Uh-huh, and what about the 12?
That was for some computers, and I guess I don't know what we're going to do as far as replacement equipment for next year.
I could go over that. I did have a request from her office, and unfortunately, if I'd known we'd be going into it right now, we'd.
Okay. I'm interested in fire since Paula said the chief was going to wait me out, maybe 9,000.
That indeed does include the request for the vehicle.
That could be.
Essentially, we indicated, give us your wish list, as it were, and then we'll see how much money we have and have to prioritize. This does not include approximately $90,000 in improvements, some are regular maintenance, but some would be improvements, capital for IT, for the computers, so we have to make sure that we're not doubling up on what departments have asked for and what's in that request. And this does not include anything from our facilities summary, so that is a discussion to have in terms of, we can't fix everything in one year, so we're going to try to see what a good plan would be. And we've got about a four-year plan here from lands and buildings.
The fire in particular's requests were for, of course, a vehicle.
A $40,000 vehicle, right?
I think it was 36, but.
Oh, okay. Close enough.
The other ones, of course, is actually, he requested probably heating and HVAC and heating system for both stations, which does not be done this year, but in the future. I think he also had a request for kitchen upgrades for both places. Again, I stuck that in there with the idea that we would have to taper it down, knock it back down if need be. Again, if you look at the general fund, it's a million dollars over and needing to carry out, a carryover, so that is a concern.
And you have one police car purchase cruiser?
Yes, I put that in there.
And as far as, it's the kitchen facilities, that is 20, those are 24/7 operating facilities, and so that's, in terms of prioritization.
I always see him driving to Kroger, though, so.
What?
I see him driving to Kroger in the fire truck for lunch, or for food, so.
Okay. Again, those are multi-year requests, so they can be, they can really lean back if need be.
I'm sorry.
I sort of expect to have some of that.
I'm going to go ahead and do them what I started. You're going to miss it next year, Paul.
There's not a lot in lands and buildings, too. That's where this spreadsheet comes with the effect. We would like to see some repairs on this city building eventually, need some repointing in various areas. We did do an upgrade of the fire escape here, but not all of it, just the platforms and not the treads.
How about precision coming in here? I mean, the precision upgrades, please.
Perfection.
Perfection, precision, please.
I don't think they're in here at this point.
They're not, because you don't have, we haven't placed in the city facilities summary because we thought we prioritized with you to determine, and that is something we've discussed with perfection, in terms of what we may do in-house and what we may want to utilize them for, so.
Well, I was just wondering, and why wouldn't, why would the expenditure for fire station upgrades not be in the lands and buildings line? I mean, why wouldn't it go down there, where? Because they would go out, I'm sorry.
We could put it in there.
Yeah.
Actually, I don't think lands and buildings most of the time deals with the fire station.
No, it did do. I think he must have gotten, received the information from George and it submitted it in the mail just.
I would want to read, so therefore, all this stuff.
Okay, I'm going to stop right now, we can do it later, but I just wanted to know about that because.
Okay, no problem. We can, we can work on that.
And as timing-wise, I was feeling ideally that, you know, having the committee meeting and then we'd have a budget to present, and that would go through the readings.
Next Monday you meet.
Correct.
Yeah.
On Monday, can I ask about the meeting again? I mean, Thursday, we're meeting Thursday.
1:30.
At 1:30, I believe.
Downstairs.
Do you want to do downstairs or here?
What do you usually meet?
In the back conference room.
Yeah.
But.
Then I'd leave that maybe front conference room.
I think we can secure that.
Okay.
You make those arrangements. Downstairs.
Okay, and again, part of our discussion in terms of the budget was to get the numbers from Andy on what the cost is for the Oxbow Bridge, what expected revenue we'll get from the state on that. Of course, with the carriage hill bridge is right now probably the local match. That would be put in the budget, so you don't have to rush. She's trying to get that out in early February, and since everything dies at this point in terms of appropriations, it's better to put in the appropriation ordinance at that point. He does want to see if we could start the authorization to construct this year and get that rolling through, so we have two different pieces to it, authorization versus appropriation, but your choice on that. And that's the only other thing I have on my notes in terms of the budget.
Just in terms of operations, though, it seemed to me that several times this year, it, you know, the estimates didn't jibe with what actually cost, and it ended up causing trouble having it in the 500 line instead of appropriating it when you authorized the expenditure. I mean, just an idea, a thought.
No, yeah.
Because, well, I was thinking of multiple times where they ended up redoing, redoing it anyway, and so I guess I don't know why, why we're putting, why it's in there this way, why 500 is. I mean, I can see 500 for recreation and community center operations, I guess, I don't know.
Well, the bridges would end up in a capital outlay, no?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so why wouldn't it be in there?
Well, it depends how much it's, I mean, if we have the funds there, but will it balance then?
Um.
I don't know, let's just erase what I just said and go back and say, last year, when he was doing several things that I was familiar with, the numbers were not precisely what happened, so he ended up having to redo it anyway. Why not just wait with that amount unless it's something you're trying to get right away until he has firm numbers and then appropriate it from the unappropriated balance at the same time? Because there were so many things that were so confusing, and then there was money here and there was money there, and.
I, I do think, I have some information from Andy Stone, and he said that he will have the numbers, the final numbers for us by the time of the ordinance next Monday.
His final estimates, but, okay, I'm not going to be here, I'm not going to.
Well.
I mean, the best we can do is check the engineer's estimate and appropriate that amount, and then Kathy's going to speak to the grant funding and how that works.
Remember, I complained to you about how, that we start off with one amount of money and then it changes, and, you know, and I said, you know, maybe the scope changed, and, you know, I think that's part of the issue I'm trying to question. I think, you know, it would be better to have him say, this is exactly what I'm going to do for this amount of money, instead of, you know, all of a sudden, we're doing something different.
Well, okay, the roundabout and the bridge over there is under budget.
No.
Mill Street was above budget because of issues in terms of the construction, I believe, the sand, the engineer.
We had change orders, someone exceeded the amount?
Yes.
Not that, we didn't increase the unauthorized expenditures, did we?
I think you did, didn't you?
Sure, we did.
Yes.
Were we?
Probably. I was just going to say, add to, that you're exactly right, that we often get an estimate and then we have to increase it. However, another thing that happens along with, excuse me, authorization and appropriation is the certifying the resources with the county. And this isn't something that we do, this is information that my office has to send to the County Budget Commission, who do not meet every week, you know, not every day alone every week. And so, for you to appropriate money, we have to have it estimated in our budget, which is on the unappropriated balance sheet that we hand out that says amended resources, and so we can't come back in in a hurry, appropriate that money if we haven't been able to estimate it. And so, I recommend that we do what Paul said, but it's not a matter of life or death, but it's really better to have all that stuff in the budget upfront, even if you have to increase it. These are large amounts of money, the increases aren't anywhere near, and then, then everybody knows upfront that we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, so we might add 20, 30, 50 onto that. It's, it's just unavoidable, I don't know how exact you can be, but if he wants to go out to bid in January, it should be in there, and the authorization needs to be there for him to go out to bid. So, if he wants to go out early, this is just one of those circumstances where my understanding is he wants to go out early in the year, and it would be better to get these things in place, you know.
But some of the things, of course, like 100,000 for the wheel tax will probably be going toward the bridge, right, or toward Franklin-Grover, and, you know, I mean, I guess that, from the point of education of the next generation, it might not be bound. Well, what's 96.5 in the rec center, then? What's 97?
96.5, let me see.
I'd have to, you'd have to have your notes.
Yeah.
If I may speak to the Oxbow for just another moment, this is a really critical project. We have a really narrow window of construction. The project will actually be bid, as she said, and they want to let it mid-February. To allow the contractor enough time to get some, on-the-ground work done, we have to have a full closure of that with the two months. That's all we have because of the change to semesters. So, timing is really of the essence in order to be able to get this project and get through it and be able to open by the time the High University reopens in August, so.
Well, you know, and I wouldn't want you to think that I'm talking about the Oxbow, I'm talking about the other things we have trouble with. And I ended up doing a lot of water carrying.
You did.
It seemed to me this year because there wasn't accuracy, that's all I was trying to say. I was hoping that, you know, maybe we can kind of fine-tune it and, okay, I'm.
He was trying to be a good steward and bring things in, but, yes, indeed, Andy, I think, has learned his lesson in terms of, maybe just make that estimate a little bit higher and then you're able to give back.
And maybe tell exactly what you're going to do. That's also another thing, you know, like the sidewalks separate, you know, my personal opinion is every time they do sidewalks, I wish they'd let local people do it because the money stays here, but, you know, I saw already, we're doing sidewalks as part of a project on Joneswood, so, I mean, it's, there's an advantage to doing, splitting it, even if it might not be apparent at the outset, but. So, big downtown companies are going to do the first blocks of Franklin and Grover, and the local guys are going to be.
Actually, the property owners in the sidewalk assessment portion are afforded the opportunity to do it on their own, have their own contractor, as long as they do it to city standards, and see, but what they often find is that because the contractors already mobilize, that that's a less cost to them, so.
Another, I mean, just to underline the point that if you hire somebody local to do that kind of job, you're going to, they're going to spend their money here, they're going to buy gas, and the rest of those guys come in with big gas trucks from New Manamorris and wherever else, and, you know, I just think it's probably something that we could look for in the future where we're spending more money locally, but maybe not.
Well, what's been most visible of late, of course, has been the gas line, gas companies and mines, and, of course, we had no control of everything.
Which we all paid for but didn't control.
Do?
Okay, I'll stop now, for sure.
As for the community center, I think that amount for the capital, I think that's pretty close to what we did last year. I'd have my FinX expenditure sheet on me right now, but I think we, it's pretty close to what we were running last year in terms of capital.
I said I was, but what, what about the carryover policy? Would this meet the carryover policy that we were possibly?
There is a carryover policy when we left it, it was like.
Well, she's been fine-tuning it, she, Mary Ann, has been fine-tuning it, and I guess maybe this isn't the O to do it, who knows?
Well, it's still hanging out there. I guess we got the impression that you didn't want to do it this year.
I talked to Mary Ann last week.
Well.
We didn't.
Yeah.
Well, whose fault is that?
So.
You know we're here, so you know.
We're going to discuss a bunch of dead issues, but starting with chickens off, but at the side of.
Oh, gosh, don't mention that.
Well, you know, this is, this is the issue, when we're here, it's dead, it's like, okay, we have other, you know, balls to catch and juggle.
And really, the cash reserve policy, it only applies to the general fund, because, as you know, a lot of these funds, grant funds, we have to spend them all up, there's no saving that money, and we just have a lot of different types of funds. The cash reserve is for general fund only, for carry, oh, carryover policy, whatever you want to call it.
We can add that to the discussion on Thursday, because it really is a best practice, and you've been informed.
And we do have a revised draft of that, because Mary Ann did edit it, and we've all looked at it, so I think it's worth, you know, going back to the discussion.
Like the mayor said, I thought it was dead in the water.
You want me to stop? I'll go home then, yeah.
Are we finished with finance? Next is the Transportation Committee, Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. We won't wander too far from the topic because I am going to bring up some additional information about the Oxbow Bridge. And I'm not sure if we have the image that we can show that. Sherry Coons found a, an image on the weekend, this is a 1912 image of the, the Oxbow Bridge. The current one that we have was built in 1932 and was used as a U.S. route until 1972, at which time the bypass went in. So, the current bridge we have over the Oxbow is over 75 years old, and as was noted in our application to the Department of Transportation, it's the only north-south arterial in the central, central part of Athens, and it's our primary response route for fire and emergency for one-third of the city. We applied in April 2009 to the Department of Transportation for a major project under the municipal bridge program, and that was awarded in January 2010. And the three major areas that we'll be working on are to remove and replace the current bridge superstructure. We're also going to be replacing utilities that serve the campuses, heating and cooling, for which the university will be contributing to that, substantially to its cost. And then we'll also be integrating pedestrian and bike connections on, on the, on the bridge. The total project cost is 3.25 million at this point, and as we said, we will have the firm price, prices on this by next week, when the time of the ordinance we'd like to bring forward. So, of that 3.25, 2.5 is from the municipal, small, excuse me, 2.5 from the municipal bridge program from the Department of Transportation, 450,000 from the city, from the 572 fund, and then 300,000 from Ohio University. And the reason we are bringing it up right now is that, as Kathy Heck, the auditor, mentioned, we need to go to bid at the end of January, and then by mid-February, be letting this out so that we can meet the ODOT-imposed schedule for this. Any questions or additional information or comments to add?
I just want to add, as you said, High University is partnering in order to get their utility structure changed there. In addition, they've located safety money to construct a pedestrian stairway down from what's what would be Trudley Hall down to the Oxbow area.
Yes, Councilmember Sands.
Wasn't there some discussion about money spent on the Carriage Hill Bridge would be available here, too? Where does that fit in?
The cost share estimate that is required in this project is an 80/20 mix, and what we do have then is a credit for the money that we spent on the Carriage Hill Bridge repairs that will apply as part of the cost share that's for the bridge project. So, yes, that will be playing into it. Good point.
Often, most of our, our share is in kind, or, you know, now we're going to use this credit for these projects, work that we do ourselves. Our 20, the 20% that we put up is often mostly, you know, in kind, it's work that we do, not money that we have to add separately or on top of.
So, some of our people would be actually working on that?
Yes, yes.
As well as other.
They do inspections and things like that, and so, yeah, so this bridge credit will be part of our, our 20% share.
According to this email I see from the 28th, it says, the match would be close to 8317, I have to get the credit for the bridges, for the Carriage Hill Bridge, which is still being worked on.
Yeah.
And we're going to switch out the pipes sometime tomorrow, next day. being worked on, and we're going to switch out the pipes sometime tomorrow, next day.
No water.
No water in the boiler.
In addition, and I assume this will be wrapped up in the ordinance for the authorization, not only to bid and what have you, we'll also have a construction engineering component to this. That's what ODOT requires, that. So, you have the design engineers who designed it, then you have to have the construction engineers who oversee the construction, so.
And it'll be the shortest construction period next summer that we'll see in a long time.
But again, the construction will take place, you know, if it's let mid-February, they'll have until, like, the end of October to complete the project as a whole, just those two months in which it can be closed with a nice incentive worked for the roundabout.
Any other questions or comments? And that's the only, that's it for the transportation.
Our last committee meeting is a committee of the whole to discuss air, water, soil impact concerns, I believe regarding fracking. Who wishes to speak to this first?
I can, President, I can begin the process. Thank you. Again, I just wanted to acknowledge briefly that many of us on council have received concerns from citizens and community members about potential health issues regarding the impact of air, water, soil, and the extraction of some business practices related to the extraction of natural gas. And so, this, again, is something that's been on the mind of many of us, and we've been having discussions and meetings looking into it. Last week, as the mayor alluded to, he was out of town, so we're not able to, that was personal, we weren't able to meet. I know that Member Gazi's been working on some things as well as Member Vane, so I want to also give them the opportunity to share this evening. Any thoughts?
Nothing to add.
No?
No, we're still in the process. I think we're at a minimally ban within the city limits, maybe within the three-mile zone, too, because I think a lot of people have no concept of what they look like. There's one by St. Clair, so they're just going in. I mean, it's a huge site, denuded of vegetation. If one of those would happen, say, out in the Margaret Creek Valley, would really have an impact on our water. Anyway, but we're still, I guess I feel that I personally am flailing around, looking for a way to do it, isn't that right?
Yeah.
We're kind of flailing, I'm flailing.
There's a lot of different ideas and concepts out there in tackling this, the most efficient way, and again, my take on it is to do what I can to help protect the citizens of the community and to make sure and ensure that we have clean air and clean water. And again, hopefully, something that we can address would be not only the protection and health and safety of us here and now, but the future of Athens and its future citizens. So, that's why it's such a grave concern for many of us.
I'd like to point out that we have acted on this one time, just very recently, with the proposed lease in the Wayne, and with us and a lot of other community partners and nonprofit partners, the Wayne has decided to put that lease, to cancel that lease sale. I think that they look at the fact that we have a very vulnerable aquifer. People talk about, oh, you know, the aquifer, we won't be getting near the aquifer, but it has to be realized that once they punch through the aquifer, then you were, you know, the aquifer is then vulnerable. I mean, it's kind of like punching through other sorts of, you know, you punch through your skin, your skin is vulnerable to infection. And so, I think that with our work and the county commissioners and all the different water groups and the Leacs and those sort of thing, people, we all pulled together, we let it be known that this was not a good idea, and we listened. We really appreciate that.
The university had input as well, I believe.
And the university. I think that that shows what a united front can do to help ensure that the protection of our water resources, protection of our viewscapes and all those sort of things, which ultimately is protection of, you know, what makes us a community to draw in different types of economic development and such. We don't need this type of economic development. We need long-term, sustainable, high-paying economic development, and I think that we need to go forward with this sort of thing.
Thank you. And I might add as well, this isn't something that a few zealots or hippies in Athens are worried about. This is, the EPA's website has acknowledged in March of 2010 their intention to conduct a study in response to a request from Congress to look into this issue at depth, and so the EPA is gonna release initial findings to the public in 2012. So, they're having this study reviewed by a science advisory board, independent panel of scientists to ensure the agency conducted the research using scientifically sound approach. Again, so I think it's a very intense issue.
The one thing that I thought, as we've gone on, is that people are pretty ignorant of two things. Those people especially that think this is a hippie-dippy kind of thing, and that is the Halliburton loophole, which allows these to go forward with very little regulation. The people constantly, well, not constantly, every so often someone will say to me, well, the EPA will inspect, and I say, well, I guess you don't really know that there's an exemption, and what hasn't been covered has been exempted by the state. There is very little protection. And the other thing that I find interesting is so many places, the mineral rights are emanated from the surface rights, and that's also going to be a big problem in this area. I don't know how this will shape up. I just think every time we look at the last 140 years since we started coal mining, we had our boom then, I mean, look at, we're still trying to clean it up. We haven't gotten all of that mess cleaned up yet, and now we're gonna start another one. I mean, I'd be willing to do more conservation if I could do less of this, but that's just my opinion.
Any other comments? Mayor Wild?
If we were being smart as stewards of the planet, we'd probably have more time till the EPA could talk with some studies. The shale's been there for 500 million years. I'm sure it can wait a couple of years. My concern is the rush that I see occurring here. Everything we do in this case is, if it is, you know, it's trying to hold back a tsunami with a teacup. But at the same time, if it's really such a rush and such a boom, we shouldn't rush it. A friend of mine liked it to taking, you know, you used to have those little egg races where you hold the egg in a spoon, and you walk or you run, and, you know, and what we're talking about is our water quality and our environment, and this is such a rush, I'm sure some slop will occur. As far as I know, they talk about the techniques tried and true, but it's a combination of techniques. It's the horizontal drilling as well as the multiple hydro fracking that makes an unknown territory. And again, we have to be concerned about our water.
Operated by humans, too, right?
Yes.
Who are known to make mistakes.
Oh, are you serious?
Yes.
And then we had a nice gas well explosion. Why has gone out of here down that page?
It's a gas pipeline.
Gas pipeline, yes.
Other comments?
Yeah, I did read in a media report not long ago that experts says it's safe. Experts say a lot of things, they're not always right. And just looking today before the meeting, in neighboring Pennsylvania, there are a number of lawsuits in process right now because damages being alleged from this drilling activity, including one of 62 plaintiffs, 24 of them claiming physical, personal injuries to them, to their health from the activities that are, the drilling activities that are going on near them, not to mention the noise from trucks coming in and out right next to their, 200 feet from their doorstep all day long. And several other lawsuits are cited due to groundwater contamination. People are losing their well water due to fracking in Pennsylvania, which is not so far from where we are now. Member Bane might be able to talk about the geology of it a little better than me, but I'm sure that...
I'm a geologist.
I'm sure it's very similar.
A geologist. Not a geologist, but I...
But you know more about the...
Yeah, it's because I hang out with my... I've been in the physical a lot. And I do think, though, there was an article in the paper in the New York Times about a week ago that had a long list of things that had happened, and it put a different face on it. I believe, maybe we could get it on the website, in Scientific America, Scientific America also had some examples of contamination of groundwater from the west. And we've been told, oh, there's no example, it's only 10 years old, there are no problems with this, and then we find there are problems.
Yes, I think I read the article, November 17th, New York Times.
Yes, and it was quite long.
Yes, it had to do with the retention ponds, the returns of fluids that came out with high salt, bromides and chlorides in it, leaking of benzene, arsenic, tears in the retention pond lining. I think they talked about one that the deer went in, guarded, and never came out, so they had to haul out the body. So, little things like that. It is, we're human, there's flaws, and there will be mistakes, and the question is, is it a small mistake or a big one?
Who's OXIS going? The Pittsburgh Post-Gazette had a letter, a long essay by a person who was not necessarily against it, but explained or described the experience with fracking, the contrast between the basic corporate position, which is, oh, we'll tell you everything, and then the dynamite going off on Sunday morning, when they weren't at all prepared for the, they weren't even aware of why they were blasting. Now, and I think that there's often that discrepancy, it's just with cell phones, much easier to report. And I think that that was, they talked about the people who were working on it, and none of them were her neighbors, the Pittsburghers, they were from Oklahoma, Texas, undocumented, from Mexico, all kind of different people working.
I also think that it makes sense for us to do it because we are the best people to advocate for the health and safety of the citizens of Athens, because we've seen from the ridiculous statements from our, one of our representatives in the House about how there's never been any sort of water contamination from this sort of thing, and just the rabid policies that some people want to put forward and calling us, you know, oh, we're just, you know, we want to do things willy-nilly, or we're extreme environmentalists. No, we care about the health and safety of our people, the health and safety of our groundwater, which is extremely vulnerable, and the potential to do other types of economic development that are long-term and sustainable. And that's not to be put aside by various representatives at the House level of being, you know, extremists or something. We're caring and we're concerned, and we want to do the right thing. And so, I think that we need to go forward with this and push other entities to go forward with this and put it to the state that we need to do moratorium until the EPA comes out with their report.
If I could make one comment, you know, I think basically, slightly democratic, the president is, and he controls some of the agencies, so the way we were able to slow down, the one that really kind of scares me, and the reason I would really encourage everybody to go after the three-mile area, is Stroud's Run. Anybody that owns 300 acres now is a millionaire. If you've got 300 acres in the Marcellus Shale area, you're now a millionaire. That's how much money they give you. And as the state is looking at balancing their budget, and we are looking at the hundreds and hundreds of acres out there that is a lot closer to the city, I think it's really, really important that somehow that gets stopped there. And that's only the state talking, folks, and we know where the political boundaries are there. That's the only comments I wish to make. Jim?
I was just gonna back up what was being said on that, remember Fall, remember Vane, that yes, we should go ahead with an ordinance to ban fracking and related policies within the city of Athens and the three-mile limit. Maybe we need some guidance from our law director about that three-mile limit, but whatever we can do. We were one of the first to write letters pointing out the dangers of lease sale in the Wayne National Forest upstream from us, and I think other entities were influenced by our letter, and hopefully, the same would happen in this case.
Other comments? Member Nicely?
I'm just a second or third, but to agree with Chris Fall's comment that we care about citizens, but it's not only caring about them, too. I think even beyond that, we have a responsibility, and we provide fire and police protection. We also, and we go, we are very careful about our water system and how we take care of it and treat the water so that everyone have a healthy, you know, waters and safe water supply. So, it's just part of our responsibility of all of the council and the city.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? See, now I'm having a cross, Mayor Wild.
You have miscellaneous, right?
Yes, I'm sorry, we do.
Okay, two miscellaneous items. One is that I'm sure you received the update, and we need to ratify the solid waste plan, right?
I was looking for the letter. It was downstairs.
Yes, it was downstairs. You should have a copy of it now.
Yep.
I believe it's on the Athens Hopkins Recycling Center website. I hope it's all been added, addendums have been added, any updates. So, that needs to be put forward. There is a draft resolution ordinance that's in there, but you've done it already twice, so you should know about that.
Will we be suspending the... No?
We'll be reading it first time, next time, because it just came.
Sure.
Okay, the other one, of course, is division of wards by census. I believe, did you guys get maps?
Yes, we do.
Okay. There's a, I believe there's a map as it stands right now, which of course, Ward 1 is at 6,200, no, Ward 1 is 6,200, yeah, 6,200, Ward 2 is 6,500, Ward 3 is 58, and Ward 4 is 52. Paul Loeb with the Health and Real Guard and Matt Trainer have worked out some scenarios. You have some time to do that, I believe. Section of code that talks about having you to change the wards and districts is Highway Vice Code 73106, Division of City and Wards. Did you want copies of that, or just so you know the ordinance, or you know it already? Essentially, it just says within the first October, first day of October that you're filing is that Centennial Census Year, so I guess that's what we have to do.
Thank you.
Just so you know what's going on. And again, if you look at the maps, it's just, well, tweaking on the corners from what I see, not a lot of changes. I think it's been...
Give it to someone, it's gonna be here next time.
I'll share with the clerk.
And again, this is just for you guys to work out. The changes, if you look, there's four different scenarios, I believe, that were given to you. He said you could make hundreds of them. I think they were sent to you as PDFs as well, so you can have, there's one that actually gives you the census block numbers, so you could actually play around with it yourself, you can blow it up big enough to read the numbers. But if you were to look at it in size, you wouldn't be able to read a thing. And again, most of the shifting is between the, trying to make balance. I think the most balanced one, Plan Alog was talking about, was scenario two, in terms of the total numbers.
That resulted in a plus or minus of 60 difference in terms of your representation in within the roads.
What committee would we like to review this? Committee of the whole?
That's why you're talking about?
Possible scenario three is a plus or minus of around 180, possible scenario four, this a minus of 103. And the first possible scenario was kind of just times four, you know, try to get as close. But if you're looking for balancing in terms of the numbers that each representative is represented to, exactly, there was possible scenario two. And then, like you indicated, we can play with this all day long, but we kind of turn them after a foot, we can start and see what council wants to do.
This is, could be something for your retreat, if you choose to discuss it, but it has to lock it on sooner than later. it has to lock it on sooner than later. And that's all we really have for Committee of the Whole.
The Decentennial was last year.
Yes. 2010, 2010 is when we do it every 10 years, right?
Yeah.
So you're following, if I read that correctly, right?
With 90 days from...
October 1st.
October 3rd.
Is that what, I just gave you my last copy, so you'll have to read the ordinance as is, the Highway 210 as is.
90 days after the 1st of October. And we're late.
So you're only one.
We're late already.
Oh, dear.
I think last time you decided not to do anything 10 years ago. I know some of you were sitting in the audience at the time. After that, I think it falls to the Service Safety Director to do something about it.
What?
Smiling.
I've been told that you don't want me to, so that's why I'm coming into council so that you can determine your representation.
You could create a student ward all on your own.
Yeah.
Something that's been threatened many, many times.
True.
Seriously, would Service Safety Director or the mayor, would you confirm, if you're saying that the Decentennial year was 2010, then this is 30 days, 90 days after the first day of October, the year following, so we're talking, it has to occur in the year of 2011, of which we have three days, a few days left, 33 days, something like that, right?
That should be enough to play, no?
Okay, so it's something that we need to consider in this term.
Right, I hear what you're saying.
And again, the changes aren't that dramatic if you look at the positions. And if you want more information, you can always contact Polo.
The US Council would wish to get very dramatic.
Wow, you can do that, too. There's a limitation of what you can move around because you could move yourselves right out of wards.
It's amazing how many representatives are right on your head.
Yeah.
It's our own little form of cheering man during.
Well, I, he'll probably give you, he could probably give you the data to plug if you're good at GIS and go with that.
But these are very pretty pictures.
Nice colors.
And it would be good to see a larger version of them because I see that item D says, as far as is practical, you're supposed to use county lines, streets, alleys, lot lines, avenues, public grounds, watercourses, municipal corporation lines, center lines of platted streets or railroads. So trying to keep it compact so we don't get odd, you know, configurations of wards, so.
We can do that. We can ask them to put it in a big plot and have those ready for your retreat.
That would probably be the easiest thing to look at rather than, you know, I mean, these are very helpful, especially the color coding, but I think then actually to see streets and alleys and...
I actually asked him for the small size, so the management will see this.
Again, you do have...
But in work sessions, the larger.
Sure.
You do have PDFs of this, right? Did you get organ attachments?
Yes.
Okay, so you can always just, you know, go to your computer and enlarge them. You will not see street widths, but you'll see the lines, and as soon as it goes up to central lines.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else we wish to discuss? Is there any other miscellaneous? We stand adjourned.